Yeah, streamline. It's trying to be like us, John.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call and order a workshop meeting at the City Council of Satellite Beach, September 6, 2017, approximately 6:50 p.m. And it's for the interview board applicants. So this will be very easy, since I believe we probably know everybody here. And we'll start with Amy. If you would like, please, just...
Sit.
Sit.
(laughing).
So you can introduce yourself, too. I think we've interviewed you for something, have we?
Yeah, at the, uh, last week.
Yeah.
The, um... Ambassador.
Ambassador, coming ambassador meeting, yeah.
Just tell us a little bit about yourself, and the process is this. You just, little bit about yourself, you marked a couple of boards here, and then part of our regular council packet towards the end is appointments to board. You're more than welcome to stay during the meeting. You don't have to, they'll contact you.
Okay.
Okay. So floor is yours.
Um, so my name is Amy Baldi. I've been a resident in Satellite Beach for ten, um, ten years. About eight years ago, um, I designed and built a house in Satellite Beach that's net zero. I believe at the time it was the first green platinum home. I still live in it, um, and operated it, and owner operated. Um, I spent the last three years commuting to Cambridge, Massachusetts, where, um, I was a student at Harvard University, and I just graduated with my master's in sustainability, um, from Harvard. So now that I'm back and not commuting anymore, I feel it's time to, that I take what I've learned and come back and help my community.
Great. Thank you very, very much for... Questions, Karen?
I have none, actually.
Okay. We do have positions open, I think.
We, uh, we don't have a position open on planning its own.
No, we have...
We're not sustainable.
Right. Mark number one was sustainability, and obviously that's your expertise.
That's my field, yes.
Right. And we do have that, so, great. Questions?
Do you have any plans or ideas that you want to bring to the board? Like, what do you feel that you're going to bring to the board that would be like a different idea, or what would you like to see the city do that we're not doing already?
I have a whole...
Do?
Just lay right here of a model that I've made for the city.
Okay.
Um, based on, I've done an extensive amount of research on sea level rise, which I'm really excited, I live in a community that's progressive enough to understand it is an issue and take steps for it. Um, in theories, the models I've created are more of living with water instead of spending a bunch of resources right now to hold back water, which I find to be difficult. But, um, it's just theories and different ways of building, design, placement, small changes, um, in terms of when we do remodels and new construction, of things that can be done a bit, um, more efficiently.
Nice.
And I've done a lot on water conservation as well. And I'm happy to, if you need to see it later, I'll show it.
Any other questions?
I, I just want to say the positions that are available on this board are alternate member seats. And as an alternate member, if a primary member is not there, they rotate who the voting alternate is. But we encourage and ask that all alternate numbers attend every meeting because we want your input. So this is an alternate seat starting out, and if a permanent seat opens, there's the ability to slot into a permanent seat when those, when those positions open, so...
Perfect. I'm happy to be available.
Let you know that.
Yes, that are... I saw it online.
Okay. Any further? Amy, thank you. You're more than welcome to stay for our meeting.
Sure.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Christopher. Hi, buddy.
Good, very good.
Good, bud. Floor is yours.
All right. My name is Christopher Reed, and I might read from my notes because, that's why I wrote them, just in case I fall out. Um, I'm a, a long-time resident here in Satellite Beach. Been here pretty much my whole life. My family has been at Satellite Beach since 1976. Um, so this is my hometown. I've gone to all the Satellite Beach schools, Surfside, Delora, and Satellite High. From here, I've gone on to get my bachelor's in economics at University of North Florida. And right now, I'm pursuing my master's in project management at FIT. I'm very interested in the sustainability board because, um, sustainability is a very important topic for me. Um, it's something that I've learned growing up in this community. As you can see on my letter that I gave you, uh, the word sustainability has many different definitions. I really think that it's important that we define it and move forward from there. But, uh, I put what I think of as sustainability as the support of long-term environmental, economic justice, human rights, or culture of peace, balance. Uh, balance is very important, especially here on the barrier island. We've got a lot of issues in the area. I lived in Denver for quite some time. I moved out there after my undergraduate work. Um, and I worked in project of property management and development. Out there, we, we did a lot of mixed-use properties, um, that were commercial below and residential up top. Uh, there were mixed-income apartments as well. Um, one of my hobbies during that time was going to the mountains and enjoying, uh, self-sustaining communities. Uh, I went down to Taos, New Mexico, and that was one of the places that I remember, where I visited earthships. I don't know if you ever seen earthships. It's pretty crazy. But, uh, you know, they built, made their homes out of the earth or build them out of whatever's in the area. And that really impacted me. Um, I, I did build a lot of friends through that, so I was very aware of things like that in the community and in our country. So that's, that's pretty much me in a small nutshell. But, uh, you can see my, my interest at the bottom as well. I, I did meet Mindy Running. Uh, that's one of my interests. And, uh...
I'm not as fast as he is. I will try.
Thank you, Christopher. Questions here?
I'd like to make comment. You know, one of the things I think is, is really great is someone who's basically born and raised here, um, and as we know, many people do leave here, but it's nice that they come back and, uh, you know, have a passion such as you for your community, for sustainability and stuff like that. I, I think that's one of the great things Satellite Beach has is that, and I think we, we talk about that often, how people start here, they go through the schools here, they, they tend to leave, go to college, and then somewhere either later on or getting a family like to come back and be part of that community they grew up in. So, um, I commend you for that. I think that's great that you love to come back. I think people that come back to their area feel a lot more vested in it and want to give more to it because this is their hometown. So I, I, to me, I, I think that's a success story. I, I really like that you like that, that you left, you came back, and you want to be part of that. So thank you for volunteering your time and wanting to come out and do this.
Thank you. I always think you'd be a great fit. Again, Chris, thanks for coming out and participating. We appreciate it. I appreciate you. Chris, I'm going to hold my comment till it comes in agenda item. I have an idea. And I'm gonna, let me just tell you a little bit about it. What I'm seeing on the sustainability board, we're getting some really great people. Well, we started this board only a couple of years ago, and maybe arbitrarily we could put a number on how many people are members of that board. So what I really hate is we got great members, great people that want to be on it, great new ideas, that we really didn't know the size of the board should be. I don't want to lose anybody who has this experience because that's what we were trying to get when we started. I mean, I think in a way, we didn't know what we were going to get when we first started this. And it's turned into being something pretty amazing. We're kind of the cutting edge of a community doing it. So I'll bring it up during that time. Uh, I think it's probably more appropriate there, but I, uh, I want to get as many people on, just seeing these great applicants and going, you know, I don't want to turn people away, I want them to be involved in the system. So, thank you for being a, a homeboy.
All right. Yeah, that's right.
Right? Did they? Oh, excuse me. You have anything I apologize?
No, I've known Chris since he was in Satellite High School, so, you know, we go way back. And I think it's great, I love him like Steve. I think it's great that you're stepping back into the community.
Thanks, great.
We like having you.
Thank you. Nancy, wait a second, timeout. Do you want, you want me to, you're more than welcome to say something? You've been there, we all know you. So, we've already interviewed you a billion times?
Yeah.
So...
Whatever you want.
If it fits with you, I know what we've already discussed, it, it fits with us.
Okay.
And we'll just take care of it during the, uh, the meeting.
Okay.
Is that great with everyone?
Yes. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further, uh, business on the workshop?
Yep.
Here and done? All adjourned this, and I think we got a couple of minutes, correct?
Couple. We'll give you a couple.
One second. For our regular meeting, the City Council of Satellite Beach, September 6, 2017, approximately 7:05. Please join Councilman Montanaro for usually a prayer and, uh, and a pledge.
Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to make decisions for our city, our residents. Please be with our first responders, especially as the storm comes in, our public works staff, and all the rest of our city staff with Irma coming in. Please be with, and watching out over our armed forces spread out across the world, and, uh, hopefully Irma will go somewhere else, Lord. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Joining us, the United States of America, and the Republic of which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 3, Presentation of a Proclamation. Vice Mayor, thank you.
Since this proclamation happened September 11, since we so happen to have the fire chief and the police chief in the room, if you would please join me up here. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So this proclamation is issued in Satellite Beach, Florida. Whereas September 11, 2017 marks the 16th anniversary of an unprovoked and sensational act of terrorism on our homeland. Four civilian aircraft were hijacked on September 11, 2001, and crashed in New York City, Pennsylvania, and the Pentagon. And whereas we will always remember the innocent lives of U.S. citizens of all heritages, as well as visiting citizens of foreign nations perished as a result of those horrendous attacks that could terrorize our nation. And whereas we remember the sacrifice of our civilian military first responders who rushed in the darkness to carry others from danger, we honor their bravery and courage for their quick and selflessness of actions. And whereas on this somber day, we will mind all those who wish our nation harm, that we stand united as one nation under God, vigilant in our fight against terror, and determined to continue as a beacon of hope and freedom for people everywhere. And whereas the noble spirit of the American people will not tire, will not falter, and will not fail in fighting for the safety and security of our homeland. And whereas Congress has approved and requests that we observe September 11 as a Patriot Day and a National Day of Service and Remembrance. On behalf of Frank P. Cattino, Mayor of City of Satellite Beach, from our county of Florida, we hereby proclaim September 11, 2017, as Patriot Day and a National Day of Service and Remembrance, and we encourage our community to join in honoring and remembering the victims of September 11, 2001, and to pay tribute to the many heroes who protect and defend our great nation, and to the police and firefighters who keep our community safe. Thank you for your service, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. So, thank you. This time, we'll move on to Agenda Item 4, Citizens' Comments. The floor is open for non-agenda items. Here in the speaker, close the citizens' comments, move on to City Council comments. Councilman Gibson?
Nothing, just preparing for the storm and hoping that, uh, I don't have to, you know, evacuate with three kids and chickens and dogs and cats and whatnot. So, hope everybody stays safe, and that's about it.
Thank you. Donna?
Um, just wanted to say I attended the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, and it was probably one of the best conferences they've had. It was the largest-attended conference they've ever had in its history. Um, I was pretty busy through the whole thing, but probably a lot of the different committees and boards that I sit on, but the most highlight of the whole conference was the fact that Satellite Beach was a presenter, one of 10 presenters at this conference where 406, 410 cities in the, in the state of Florida attended. And Mark Breimer and Courtney did the presentation, and I, I think it was just great that Satellite Beach had the exposure that we had based on our community paramedic and our Stop By and Say Hi program. So it's a tribute to, to our city and our police and fire departments to do that, so that was your, that was your, one of the, your program that started out, so...
Thanks, Tom.
But I, I just, I have to say it was great that we had it, and I know you're going to talk about it, too, so...
I think I echo the sentiments, and we're all looking forward to our hurricane coming this way. Appreciate all the efforts of the staff. I know you guys are, are very busy out there, um, which is probably a precursor to the way things are going to be in the next five, six days out there. Please make sure everybody stays safe, and for all those out there, I, as we talk about at the Cape, and I know the Air Force has related this, the one of the most important things is communicate, communicate, communicate. So obviously, as a city, if there are issues, there's problems, there's needs, help, something like that, I think we're all pretty well going to be available. Um, anything we can do to help out, all it takes is a, is an ask, so, uh, we look forward to, uh, serving with you through this, uh, event about to come. That's it.
Uh, just to follow up on Dom's comments, thank you, Dom. Uh, Courtney, glad to be there with you and, and having your team there, too, because you had a police and fire chief there, and it was nice to see them there. It was well represented, but, uh, been a long project for a lot of years, and it was nice to be accepted into that and be able to do that presentation, so thank you to the city for that. Uh, the only other comment I have is I have received an enormous number of comments, uh, which probably comes down to about 12, but, uh, on the A1A de Soto project. I mean, there's a lot of positive feedback on that. I've showed the, the renderings to several people, actually, it's getting a little tattered, and people are very positive about that. I think that's going to be a neat project if that comes to fruition. So again, congratulations on you and John Stone getting that pulled together, because I think that'll be a, a real testimony to our efforts to try to improve the face of the city with, with a really quality project, so thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I also attended Florida League of Cities, great presentation by our two men presenters, Courtney and Mark, great job. Um, also attended, which was very interesting, the marijuana, um, program that they did the day before. Super interesting, a lot of information, a lot of still unknowns out there, I guess, with it, but learned a lot, very worthwhile going. Uh, Chief, is there any sweets over there? Do I have the same as last year since I'm the mayor? Room with these guys?
We, we have you covered, Mayor.
Thanks. Appreciate it. He does cook very good. I hope he got better from last year.
We got you covered.
Make a great grilled cheese, so hang on.
All right. Thank you.
Evacuation's looking better.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, City Manager's Report, and if you look at your, uh, it's here, we have another copy. Courtney?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, we forgot to put the attachments in your packet, so, um, you didn't get the copies of the notes that were, um, attached to the, the report, so you have a new report in front of you. This is what happens when our city clerk decides to take some time off, so we make a lot of mistakes without her careful eye. So, um, the Sustainability Board Community Garden grand opening has now been canceled, unfortunately, um, because of the hurricanes. We'll be announcing that, um, redo as soon as we get another date. Um, Saturday, September 16th is the National Drive Electric Car Show at the David R. Schechter Center from 10 to 4:00. And this is the biggest nationwide event for electric vehicles, and it's be our first time we had that event with the electric vehicle store that's right there on the corner, uh, so that'll be exciting. Um, we received a thank you note from Erin Hegadis thanking Officers Holland, McGann, and Anderson for helping her in a difficult time. We also received a thank you from Michael Banta thanking the recreation teacher Lori Chivone for being helpful and an important member in the community. How long has Lori worked for us? A long time. I mean, years. And, um, and then we also received a thank you from Sheriff Wayne Ivy stating that former police chief Cody, police chief Pearson, and administrative assistant Linda Harlow will be receiving awards at the Second Annual Public Service Awards and Hall of Fame Ceremony on September 23rd at the King Center for Performing Arts. So that's very exciting. Um, we will be scheduling your medical marijuana issue on September 20th, so I look forward to that. Um, we want to make sure that we have a full council for that meeting, so if you're not able to be there, um, please let me know, so we can reschedule that to another date. Also coming up, that we will be trying, at that meeting, um, we will be having a presentation from Melbourne Water Utility, because we've gotten a lot of questions about what those blue marks mean in people's driveways, um, you know, about boil water notices going on all the time. We seem to get one every month. So we want to make sure that, um, you all are aware of their activities and what their plans are for future improvement, so they're going to make a, a nice presentation to you on the 20th. Um, at a later date, we will be working on providing you an update on how we're handling the heroin and, uh, fentanyl and, um, you know, pain pill epidemic that's going through Bavard County and how that's affecting our community. So we'll be working on that as a future presentation to you. And that is all I have so far.
Thank you.
We'll be updating you on the, on the hurricane items in the special meeting coming up after this.
Okay, great. And I can ask my questions then on water, so... Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions for our city manager? Thank you very much. Moving on to the next Agenda Item, um, council's permission, I'd like to move Item 9 in front of 7. So Item 9 is discuss, take action on an agreement with FPL on the proposed leasing of city property for solar at City Hall and Pelican Beach Park. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, in June 17, uh, we started entering conversations with Florida Power and Light on installing solar trees and solar canopies in the city at municipal locations, um, one at City Hall and Pelican Beach Park. As we move forward through the agreement, we are looking at concentrating the first agreement at Pelican Beach Park, and this will be a canopy, um, with, with solar on the roof of the canopy. And it's basically a lease agreement with FPL. Um, what we, what FPL is also doing is installing, um, electric conduit and, um, plugs for our special events at the same time. So we've, we were trying to concentrate, um, we wanted to get Pelican Beach Park done first, um, as a way to really, it's because, because it's so visible to the community, to really show the community, um, and, and, you know, kind of have that solar demonstration at our park. This is all part of FPL's, um, you know, push to start generating solar energy and, and be part of that solution regarding solar. When they went through their rate increases, they received a lot of public comment that they, you know, a lot of the public wanted to see more solar, um, and they took that very seriously, and that, this is how they're responding. Um, this is in addition to, to solar fields that they're building throughout the state of Florida, but these are their smaller projects, and they're more like demonstration projects. And while they don't generate a significant amount of energy, what it does do is provides that public interest, peace, and education to the community. That's it.
Thank you very much. Questions from council?
I have a quick question about how, oh, I guess...
Nancy Flickinger with FPL is here to answer specific questions that I wouldn't be able to answer.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, when I was on the sustainability board, they came and, um, gave us some concepts of the different types of canopies that we're going to be putting up, um, that they could put up. How big of, are we just going to do one? Um, how, what size are we talking about putting up that Pelican? How many panels would be?
Currently at Pelican Beach, um, we looked at the facility and found that right up against A1A would be one of the best spots to do that because of your farmer's market, and it would be most visible. It's actually currently projected to be a 50 KW solar panel, which is huge. It's going to go the whole length of Pelican Beach.
Okay, okay, good. That was good. I wanted to get an idea physically of how far it would go.
That's what's projected. That's what we're working towards, okay?
Thank you.
Sometimes things change.
Yes, I understand.
We do have to go through permitting, too, so that's another consideration. Right. And permitting on the coast is a little bit more involved than permitting inland, so...
Will the construction of this cause us to lose any parking spaces because of what the pillars and...
I don't know. Um, we try not to...
I was looking at, they have it in, uh, in our book. It shows that, I think it's 202 feet long is what they show, and then they show the actual construction laydown area, and they show the actual FPL canopy where it's going to take that, take that up there. Which I'm sure is, again, projected, the idea of what it's supposed to be, but that, that's how I saw it in there.
Stay flexible. All right. But that's what we want to do. Yeah. It'll provide a lot of nice shade for your vendors.
I think it fits right in with, you know, what we've been talking about with sustainability and everything that we're talking about doing, and, you know, this is a wonderful project. Thank you for helping make this happen in our city.
And thank you, citizens, because a lot of it has to do with their $9 a month impact that they're adding to their electric bill to help pay for this. That's where the money for this, these type of projects come from. So, so if you didn't know about that, you, their residents of, um, our city near Bavard County anywhere that, um, can opt to charge themselves and assess themselves on their bill to help pay for solar installations throughout Florida, and that's, that's part of the funding source for these.
Further questions from council?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Just give me one second, please. Um, Nancy?
Yes, sir.
When we open up for citizens' comments, if the citizens have questions and you might be able to help, um, I'll call you to answer some of those questions, okay?
I'll do my best, absolutely. Is that now?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign solar lease agreement with Florida Power and Light. Second?
Uh, motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Um, at this time, open up the public comment on Agenda Item 9. Floor is open. There are no comments, close the public comment. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Back to council. Further council? Karen, on the door?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Move on to Agenda Item 7, Discuss, take action on donation of city vehicles to Satellite High School. For Adam, excuse me, sir.
Good evening. Um, before you, uh, this evening is a request to donate two of our, um, fleet vehicles to the, uh, high school. Typically in the past, you know, we've junked vehicles and, uh, we looked at, we were going to originally junk these two vehicles, um, and they, they were going to get $200 apiece. So, um, actually, John Stone made a suggestion that we donate them to the high school. Randy Pitt has quite a successful program there. He's won a couple of awards, um, in, with that program. So, uh, you know, these things do pay benefits educationally, so, um, I thought that was a great idea. City manager thought it was a great idea. So we, um, approached Randy, and Randy was, um, very happy to, uh, to do that. We've done it in the past, um, but, uh, you know, I just hadn't, hadn't thought of it. And, you know, they're not, they don't want a car a year, I'm sure, but, you know, every once in a while, they'll take them. So, um, he's ready to take them if, if, upon approval, uh, and, uh, that's it.
Good job. Questions from council?
Motion to authorize the donation of two retired city vehicles to Satellite High School's auto mechanics program for educational purposes.[1733.88]
Second?
A motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Gibson. Any further discussion from?
It's a great program that he runs over there.
Public comment on agenda item seven. Floor is open. Here are none. Back to council. Any further council discussion?
Just, thank you. Great idea. Thank you, John.
They do a heck of a job over there, too.
Yeah, Randy, Randy's got a good program.
I say wait and recycle.
That is really, when you see those cars, the way to recycle.
They're sitting next to the ball field, right?
There's one sitting there, and there's one sitting down here, so.
That's right now.
Yeah. Well, when they don't move, it's kind of hard to tell them. Rather than waste until, I just leave it there until we can do something with it.
Lenore?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item eight, discuss take action on contract for videographic services.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is asking for your authorization to sign a contract for videography services with Dylan Hanson at an overall cost that will not exceed the bid threshold of $8,300. At your last, or your March 15, 2017 meeting, you did authorize the use of Dylan Hanson's services to create videos that have been used to educate the public on a wide variety of topics. We've done videos on our bad houses, community garden openings, the muck removal of the river, and so on. And to date, we've had over 16,000 views on our community garden video, and over 15,000 views on the skate park renovation video. It's been a very great way to get the word out to our residents through other means than just the beacaster and really get to a wider variety of people. Some other things that we have used Mr. Hanson's services for has been, because he has a drone, we're able to do footage of our beaches right now before the hurricanes, stuff like that. So it's been a great relationship, and we want to continue that. So we're requesting authorization to formalize that relationship in the attached contract, which is a continuing services contract. Services would be based on a $95 an hour rate, which is not unreasonable when we look at other local vendors who charge anywhere from $75 to $200 an hour. The budget impacts include $4,500 for videography services in the general fund services department, and if we exceed that, we will look at a future budget amendment at mid-year.
Thank you. Discussion from council. Here are none. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on agenda item eight. Floor is open. There are nothing. Bring it back to council. Further counsel?
He, he does a great job. I mean, at the skate park, he, I kind of spoke, and I don't know what you did, but you made it look great when I got done, because that wasn't the way it all came out when I first said it the first three times I did it. So I know you do an excellent job for us, and I'm thrilled that you're, you know, doing the videos of the beaches and stuff like that, because those are going to be huge when we look at FEMA for reimbursement.
Thank you very much.
So I'll make a motion to authorize the City Manager to sign a contract for videography services with Dylan Hanson at an overall cost that will not exceed the bid threshold of $8,300.
Second? A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Any further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Look, thank you.
Thank you, Dylan.
We did nine. We're going to move on now to agenda item 10, presentation of FY 2016-17 third quarter budget report.
Mayor, the, this is part of our way of, you know, bringing to you and controlling budget, making sure that you're aware of where we are during the year, and Brittany Jumper, who's our comptroller, is going to present this to you for the first time, right?
Oh, Brittany, thank you.
Good evening, all. So you should have received in your packet kind of a little more of an overview of everything that's gone on in the third quarter. One of the things that we kind of added to it was the July and August to kind of give you a better picture of really where we stand right now, since the third quarter ended in June and we're now in September. So I quickly kind of put a PowerPoint together to kind of just give you an overview of the details that you have, and then if we have any questions at the end, just let me know. So right now, at June 30th, we had total revenues of $8,922,894, and there is an error on this, and I apologize. I needed to give you the year-to-date number, which is $10,268,771 is currently how many revenues we have so far. And so currently, right now, at that year-to-date number, which is August 25th, we are at 89%, of the amended budget of that So to kind of just give you some highlights so far this year, our ad valorem has come in at the $6,259,426. Building permits are much greater this year with some of the projects that have been going on at $320,000. We did receive a $10,000 donation to help purchase the K9 dog. And then we've also received over a $4,000 donation to help purchase Mobi Maps that we are in the process of working through. The expenditures so far for the general fund, at the end of the third quarter, we're at $8,157,319. August 25th, we're at $10,325,364. And again, at the August 25th number, we are 90% of the amended budget of $11,523,372. So just to kind of give you a general fund overview, currently we have spent a little over $50,000 more in expenditures than in revenues. But I do want to make the comment that this does include the transfer to stormwater. When we originally had the stormwater partial purchase at the $491,000, it was approved at that time that we would take that money out of the fund balance account at the end of the year. Currently, I was able to move that money now, so that money is still sitting in the fund balance, which brings me to my next point, that we anticipate to put more in the reserves this year than originally anticipated. And something that we brought up at the end of the budget as well, we had said that due to having to take some money from the reserves due to the last hurricane we had, we plan on whatever money we get from FEMA, which right now is estimated to be about $260,000, we will put that back into reserves as well to hopefully not have to use in the next few weeks. Moving over to your special fund revenues, just kind of a brief overview. The community service fund, the revenues are 27% currently at that August 25th date. The expenditures are at 66%. Moving on to your stormwater utility, we're at 85% of the revenues and 82% of the expenditures. Continuing on with the community redevelopment fund, 99% of the revenues, 73% of the expenditures. Capital assets fund, we are 67% of the revenues and 107% of the expenditures. And then, of course, our internal revenue fund, which is our health insurance fund, the revenues are at 74% currently, and the expenditures are at 70% currently. So that should just kind of give you a brief overview. Like I said, in the packet, you should have a little more of a detail to kind of line-by-line item if there was something specifically you were looking at. Do keep in mind that especially like with our electric franchise fees and stuff, some of those things are sometimes a month to two months behind. So we will continue to get those revenues that we budgeted for in October or November that are actually for this current fiscal year that we are in.
Thank you very much. Let me just check here. So questions from council?
No, well done.
Great presentation. Thank you very much.
And I really liked the PowerPoints. They have definitely improved.
We stepped it up with the PowerPoint.
You have stepped it up with those PowerPoints.
Nobody can take credit for that except for Brittany.
We can see that.
Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Very much. Let me open it up in case we have any questions for...
Unfortunately, now everyone in the city is going to be calling Brittany when they have a PowerPoint.
I know.
At this time, open up agenda item 10 for public comment. Floor is now open. Here are none. Back to council. Counsel, further counsel comment?
I'm just happy to see that our building of reserves again, because that made me very nervous in the last budget meeting. That makes me very happy.
Thank you very much. Brittany, thank you very much. Courtney, staff, everybody, thank you.
Great job.
Moving on to agenda item 11. At this time, I would open up a public hearing for the purpose, excuse me, for the proposed fiscal year 2017-18 budget. And the first part will be ordinance number 1180. Jim?
1140.
1140.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 1140, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the final living of ad valorem taxes by establishing an operating mileage rate of 8.1518 mils for fiscal year 2017-2018, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1140.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a small PowerPoint to describe the changes to the budget since we gave you the proposed budget.
Thank you.
But he's going to do that too.
Thank you, Brittany.
So just to kind of give you a brief, coming in in June, putting this budget together in July, there were a few other things that needed to kind of be tightened up a little bit. And so I've been in the process of doing all that. I've tightened up with the labor spreadsheet that we have, making sure going through all the health insurance things, making sure everyone has what they were supposed to have, whether spouses or family, et cetera, and tying spreadsheets together. So therefore, if you make a change to one, they all make changes, so you don't have to go through all of them. With the police and fire pension, one of the things is we needed to update the anticipated pinchable wages, and therefore, the original proposed budget compared to the updated one, you can see is the difference. With the proposed police one, we have $322,000. We've had to update that to $356,000. It's a total of $92,000 over what we had budgeted for the fiscal year 16-17. The fire budget is $98,000 more this coming up fiscal year compared to what we had last year.
I have a question on that.
Yes, go ahead.
Is that because of the changes in the law on the pensions?
Yes, it's due to the changes in the law and then making sure that we had all the correct pinchable, pinchable wages in that calculation.
Okay, great.
And also, the pension board has been changing things to be more conservative, so it's driving up our contribution, which is not a bad thing. It's actually more fiscally responsible. So what's happening now actually isn't, it affects us financially now, but better in the long run.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Courtney.
With the health insurance, like I said, we updated to include all the full impact of the health insurance renewal of that 5.7% increase, as well as to reflect the changes to the actual plan enrollments. So therefore, we had to increase the health insurance change by about $35,000. In doing all of that, we made sure we had all the payroll correct to make sure everybody was, not only with the compression, but with the 2%, all of that was included to make sure everything was 100% accurate to the best of my ability with doing this budget. So we've had to increase the payroll change about $42,000 as well. The good news, the general fund reserves are looking, like I said previously, a lot healthier than we originally had anticipated. The actual fund balance at the end of 15-16 is at a $1.3 million. My estimate for 16-17 is about 1.2, and my estimate for 17-18 is about 1.1. So give or take, but that looks a heck of a lot better than we originally looked at, so we're going to hope that continues.
Question there. We still owed approximately $250,000 from FEMA, correct?
Yeah.
So that money, when it comes back, goes into this reserve, right? So they're actually not behind the eight ball again.
Yeah, and that, and I think it's important to understand that while the reserves dipped a little bit, we, it was for a reason. It was for, I mean, we, we had reserves to use them when we need them, and that's what we did. And now we're building them back up. So it's not terrible to use your reserves, because that's what they're there for, is to use them when you need them. So we, not only do we have the FEMA payment, but we also have the sale of the property that the CRA is looking at, and that'll go back to the taxing authority. So we'll receive some money in the general fund for that, too.
So my addition is like 1395 to round it off. So we're going to actually, if we put that money in there, be more than last year. All right?
If all, yeah, if all plans out the way that it's estimated, yes, that is correct.
It might not all happen at once, but yeah.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And just to kind of give you some overview thoughts of the whole entire thing, I just want you to be aware that this budget is very, very conservative. We are trying to make sure that we have things, you know, both on the revenues and expenditure side the best that we can possibly budget for. Obviously, we cannot anticipate things like hurricanes, so we try to do the best we can to make sure we have enough money put back in case those types of things happen. I do expect to have some mid-year budget amendments, especially with the solar panels that are anticipated to be installed in the fiscal year 17-18. Hopefully, at that point, that means our electricity costs will decrease. I didn't change that, because I wanted to leave it, not knowing for sure when that is going to be anticipated in the 17-18 fiscal year. The health clinic has only been running for a few months, so it's too early to project what cost control effect on health insurance renewals will be. So something else that we'll be looking at mid-year. And then, of course, the FEMA reimbursements for Hurricane Matthew. And like I said, somewhere between the $200 and $250,000 range will be expected to come back. So that's kind of the changes that I made to the proposed budget. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer any of them. I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Questions from council?
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. I will open up for public comment on the D portion ordinance 1140. There are no public comment. Bring it back to council.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1140 on first reading.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Any further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. At this time, move on to portion C, ordinance number 1141. Jim?
Ordinance number 1141, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting FY 2017-2018 budget, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1141.
Second. Discussion from council? Or, excuse me. Courtney, anything to add?
No.
Thank you.
Motion to approve 1141 on first reading.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Montanaro. At this time, open up agenda item 11, part C, ordinance number 1141 for public comment. There are no public comments. Back to council. Any further comments? Courtney and staff, thank you very much. Hard work, great job. No really worried about not receiving those other funds and having to find out how to make it work, but you guys always come up with it. Thank you and welcome. Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, staff. Moving on to agenda item 12, ordinance 1142. The, please, I'll have to page this. This is discuss take action on ordinance 1142. Jim?
Ordinance number 1142, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending ordinance numbers 836, 1097, and 1115 of the city of Satellite Beach by updating the city of Satellite Beach Community Redevelopment Plan Capital Projects List and textual references to that list, providing for conflicts, providing severability, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1142. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. On August 2nd, the Community Development Agency recommended to approve amendments to the CRA plan. As a statutory requirement on August 21st, 2017, the Planning Advisory Board, serving in the capacity as the local planning agency, also reviewed the proposed changes reflected in ordinance number 1142 and determined the amendments to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and thereby also recommended to approve ordinance number 1142. As the final leg of the plan amendment process, the, on September 6th, the CRA discussed that and provided a recommendation to council to approve. And part of the backup is the original staff report, which we provided to the CRA. It describes the changes that we made to the plan, which includes removing two projects out of the plan, so that we end up in the CRA a year early to help the city deal with the $25,000 homestead exemption referendum that in 2018 will likely be voted in. So those impacts, we believe that by ending the CRA one year early, we'll be able to effectively deal with that.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 1142 on first reading.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion on this, on ordinance 1142 by council? At this time, open up agenda item 11, ordinance number 1142 for public comment. There are no public comment. Back to council. Any further council comments?
No.
Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, staff. Moving on to agenda item 13, ordinance number 1143. Jim?
Ordinance number 1143, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, establishing a temporary moratorium on the acceptance, processing, or approval of any wireless communication facilities in the city's rights-of-way, providing for severability, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1143.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim. Um, pardon the order.
During the 2017 legislative session, um, the Advanced Wireless Infrastructure Deployment Act was enacted and basically created a process which wireless providers can place wireless facilities in our public right-of-ways. And this law went into effect on July 1st, 2017, and it requires us basically to permit those within a certain period of time. However, we do not have any objective design standards concerning these types of wireless communication systems. So it does allow us to enact and enact objective design standards to evaluate applications for the wireless, um, communication facilities. So we are recommending to provide a moratorium, um, on these facilities to give us an opportunity to adopt amendments to the city code to adequately regulate these systems in our right-of-ways.
Thank you very much. Questions from?
So, reading the rest of that, does that say that basically this moratorium we put it in, is that only good till January 1st, 2018?
Yes.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
That's when the legislature, basically, that's the, that's the only timeframe in the legislature gave us to figure out how we're gonna do what we're supposed to do.
And have any other cities already started this process? Do we have anything to copy or apply?
City has already started, so.
Yeah.
Do you think it's gonna take that little time, or we're just gonna stretch it out that whole time and get it all, to get it all set up? Or are we just gonna knock it out and get the information?
We haven't even started the process of looking into it, so I don't know how long that'll take.
It would take all the time we can, because it's gonna take at least a month just to pass it. It's gonna take two readings, plus the time it's gonna take.
And it goes through.
To get the standards.
I'm opposed to, you know, obviously, we want to have better cellular service.
We just wanna be able to say where and what it looks like. So I don't wanna prolong it forever, because obviously 5G would be awesome, you know, but anyway, that's where.
I think the concern, too, is when you say public right-of-way, well, behind our houses, we have public right-of-way. In front of some of the houses, there's public right-of-way. So if somebody wanted to come to one of our slots and say, "I'm putting a cellular device right here, would you want that? How do you control that?" You know, and I'd love to have, you know, the service, but I also wanna make sure that, you know.
Standard design.
Where it's, how it is. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on ordinance number 1143. Floor is open. Here are no public comment. Back to.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 1143 on the first reading.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by, uh, Councilman Brymer.
Yes.
Okay, further discussion?
This is just another example of how the state of Florida's legislature is moving in a manner that doesn't allow local control over things that affect our residential neighborhoods. And, you know, the one-size approach doesn't fit all. And that's the mentality that's there right now. And this is just one of the things that have happened, um, in the 2017 session. And I think we're gonna be seeing more of these types of scenarios occurring in 18. So stay tuned, because we're gonna be looking for our residents to start helping us get the message to Tallahassee. We can't do it as your council alone. We need our residents' help. So, um, this is just one example of how things can end up in your backyard.
Thank you. Further discussion? Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Fino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Discuss, take action on contract to purchase property. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the staff is seeking authorization for the mayor to sign a contract for the purchase of land adjacent to 210 Jackson Avenue, following review and approval of the contract by the city attorney. Earlier this year, staff began a preliminary space needs analysis to determine the current and future utilization of space needs of all city facilities. As you are aware, many of our facilities are in pretty bad shape. One of those facilities is the fire department and their current need for additional space. In looking at their, um, space needs over there, we have currently three different staff members utilizing one office in a cramp, pre-cramped condition. Um, I think the fire chief's office is now storage, half of it's usually storage.
Yeah, but that's just my staff.
Right. Um, when they have drives, food drives, especially during the month of December, it's, it's full of stuff. Um, and part of the, the issue with the fire department is it really needs renovation. Um, and there's got, there's been some water damage in some of the areas of the building. When we looked at, however, renovating that building, it was, we were starting to question the, um, the wisdom of doing it there, um, because of the location of the building. And so before I get into that, I'm gonna ask Dr. Jason Evans to come up and present the, um, analysis of the resiliency and risk assessment, um, that he did during the course of our vulnerability study, uh, for the whole city. He looked at this particular property for us to, to, to help us, um, look at whether or not we wanted to continue moving forward, um, in that area. And so I'm gonna ask him to kind of go over what he did for us.
Sure. Um, yes, I've got this little report. You guys have the report within your packet here? So, yeah, so, so I guess about, about a month ago, um, we were asked to really look at this site. And, um, and so what we did is just gonna look at the elevation and, um, the road right out in the front of there, so you're looking at South Patrick Drive, is between two and a half and about three feet. Um, and, uh, there've been reports with a big rainfall event, I think Faye, a, a little bit of flooding in that area. Uh, there's never been any flooding inside the fire department, as I understand it. It's sitting at about, at about five feet. Um, and we ran some models, and so, um, let me just go ahead and say, kind of Hazas the model that we ran, it's not the exact same model that, like, for the 100-year flood plane, that's a different thing. Um, but, but this model is very, very risk averse. And so when we're looking at critical infrastructure, like fire departments and police stations, that, that's what we focus in on, because we have very, very low tolerance for that being flooded. Um, and so, uh, we ran the model, I'm gonna say we were alarmed when we ran the model. For one, um, uh, when we looked at it, it was about an eight feet of water. And then that would be about four feet of water going into the fire department, uh, the actual floor. Um, and, uh, we actually called up the FEMA contractors, as you probably know, there's new maps that are coming out. And then, uh, we looked at the new 100-year flood plain maps, actually, last week I was here. And they show it as about three feet for that area, for the, for the 100-year flood plain. And then it would basically flood in South Patrick Drive. Um, and what I caution, there can be confusion about models. For the firm, it's basically for flood insurance. That's, that's what, that's what they're saying, is for flood insurance. For Hazas, uh, we're very risk averse. And, and so even if we believe, like, the three feet, which, I'll just go ahead and say here, uh, I don't believe it, that I actually think it's higher, um, but, but I'm not, I'm not part of that study, I'm gonna make comments next month, um, that I think it should be higher, personally. But, but that's not gonna change. But, but in terms of the fire department, we want that to be probably three to four feet kind of higher than what's the 100-year flood plain. Um, and so when I look at the site, and then, uh, we started looking at this before Harvey, before Irma, um, and so I've been kind of saying all day today to my class, I know I was coming here, this is like the biggest responsibility that I've ever felt in my life. And really, I'm just gonna say that. I've done a lot of work. This year, I mean, it's, it's like a bad movie, um, that, uh, we were asked, what would be the scenario of what would put lots of water in that fire department? Harvey comes around, like, yeah, Harvey would do it. Um, Irma, if we get a bad hit from Irma, I pray that it goes east. But if we get a bad hit from Irma, I could think that there could be water in the fire department. I hope I'm wrong. I hope that does not happen. Um, so, so when I think of the future and thinking of that site and thinking, putting money into renovating it, I just have to say in front of you that, that I think it's a bad idea. And then, uh, you want it to go to somewhere that's higher. I mean, it's just, you, uh, when you think about, we have low tolerance, we don't want the first responders that are there, that they have to ride out a storm, uh, we don't want them to have water that they're having to deal with. And that, uh, that's the way that I look at this. And so, of course, it's your decision, and, and so I can't, you know, that, that I could just recommend what, what I think, just, just in terms of technical analysis. And I don't wanna be alarmist with storms coming. I did not, uh, create these hurricanes to make this case. I mean, this, this is what we're facing right now. And so, um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Questions?
I, I think I would just make the comment that I would tend to agree with them from an insurance standpoint. Obviously, you know, we're not really worried about having damage and then claiming an insurance and go back and try to fix the fire department. I think we're more, in their cases, we don't want the, need the fire department, and they're all standing in, you know, waist-deep water.
That's right.
In the fire station.
That's exactly right.
I mean, the insurance is, is no comfort when we're trying to call the fire department and they're saying, "Well, we're kind of stuck in the building." I mean, that doesn't really help us at all. So I, I would tend to agree that, I'm not really concerned with the insurance, that doesn't help us when we need them. That, that'll help us after the fact, and when it's all over with. What we really should be aware of is, you know, when we call the fire department, like we call the police department, when we need them, we need them. And we certainly don't want them to be flooded and underwater when we need them. I mean, insurance, to me, is always after the fact, as opposed to being, thinking of forward, staying ahead of it.
So, so Dr. Evans' analysis really made us start looking at for alternative sites. In doing that, we, we have our current fire station, which sits on 1.82 acres, and we're proposing that this, um, that we purchase a property on Jackson Avenue. It's, um, actually the, what used to be the parking lot for the old post office. That site is 1.92 acres, and that will allow for increased floor area in the station to accommodate growth. And it's in an area sufficient for response times. In fact, it would actually be better for our response times, because it's located at a lit intersection. The fire department, um, would be in a better location to address the needs of the 100 acres. And it would also be right next to our schools, which is very advantageous. So, um, we are, we do not have a construction timeline. In fact, we're, um, looking at later years, um, you know, five years out, but we wanna secure the property while we can, because, as you know, property values are not declining in Satellite Beach. So, um, we are recommending, uh, that we enter into this contract. We have negotiated a contract in a five-year no-money-down owner financing purchase of the property, uh, for the appraised value of 730,000. We're recommending to use the utility tax as the designated revenue source. And this proposed financing structure would include monthly payments of 7,500, which is approximately $90,000 a year, with a balloon at 60 months of approximately 403,000, plus a one-year extension option. And we can certainly always, um, pay that off at any time before that. Um, in anticipation of presenting this item to the city council, we did include a capital assets fund budget of 30,000 in 17, 18, and 80,000 in subsequent years. And based on the current proposed financing structure, and if approved by city council, a budget amendment may be necessary later in 17, 18, and we don't anticipate an issue with that.
Thank you very much. Questions from council?
I just had one. On the balloon payment, um, we're using the utility tax, you know, to offset the monthly payments. When we get to the balloon payment, is that something we're gonna pull out of reserve or, or find a different funding source for that?
Yeah.
And by that time, too, CRA is closed down, is correct?
That's correct.
I, I think it's great to, not only from the standpoint of this map that shows us flooding, but both the fire and the police departments are getting busier and busier. And just the medical end of the fire department, you talk to people that have experienced them coming out, you know, it's, it's grown, you know? And, uh, I, I think we can't let something like this slip, because we don't have any, kind of, there's no more land. And this kind of fits, I think, in a, a good position in our community right now. And, uh, so I, I think it's good for a lot of reasons. Thank you, and I'm gonna open up for public comment on this agenda item.
John Ferguson, 135 Maple. I don't think I really need to speak, but there's some details I'd like to add. We talked about flooding of the building. What he said is the building's two and a half, three feet higher than the intersection. Those aren't boats they're driving, they're vehicles. They really shouldn't be going through saltwater. Also, Craig Fullgate, is that the name of the former?
Craig Fugate.
Yeah. The former Florida Department of Emergency and then the National. He recently published a piece, which I've captured, or an interview. And his comment was, relative to this business about flood insurance and stuff, why are we paying people to rebuild where they're gonna have other claims? And there appears, in what I'm reading, in undercurrent after Harvey, most of those homes were not in the flood plain. That there seems to be a growing, I will call it awareness, that the National Flood Insurance Program is a problem. It's not a solution, it's a problem. I think it's going to go away. And if you look at the firm, I looked at it last time, it's east of South Patrick Drive that's got a problem, including cinnamon in front of Public Works. So there is a problem. You need to consider moving the fire department. I suspect you're gonna get the same answer on Public Works, and perhaps, again, the police department's higher, but if you can't get to it, it's useless. So, uh, this is just the beginning of what's going to come down, and hopefully Irma won't prove Dr. Evans right. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments still open? Okay, here are no further public comment. Bring it back to council. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for the purchase of land adjacent to 210 Jackson Ave, following review and approval of the contract by the city attorney.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion? I can say this, last year, 2:00 in the morning, driving around with the chief, it was bone dry in front of city hall in the fire department. Within 20 minutes, when the wind shifted, one of the officers called in, said the water's just about to go into complete air and heat. That's how much it rose when that wind shifted. And this map was proven to me right then, because when you look at this map and you see where the water was in a 15-minute period, it was there. So.
Thanks for reminding me, since my house is, is right there. I'm not taking much.
Birds up.
I'm not taking much comfort in looking at this map, I'm just saying.
Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Fino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, staff. Thank you very much, Doc, appreciate it. Moving on to, uh, agenda item 15, which is the proposal for our regular meeting on September 20th. Please take a look at it, and, uh, any additions or so forth.
This has nothing to do with that, actually. It's a sudden hit. Are we gonna, it's way off track, are we gonna assume that the League of Cities meeting on Monday is?
It's canceled.
It is canceled? Okay. Got it. Thank you. Did not know. Okay, thank you.
So this is, uh, the agenda proposed meeting for the 20th. Um, on this, does anybody have a problem with being here on the 20th? Because I know Courtney had asked everybody to be here, and we have some items on it that we want to keep on it. And, uh.[1738.62] that we want to keep on it, and-
I've gotta, I've gotta drive to Jackson, go for a meeting the next day, so I'll be here.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because of the meeting and the items that are on it, that we're all here, correct? Okay, thank you.
I, I had a quick question on the agenda, and you mentioned that we might be talking about the satellite track on this meeting, and I didn't see it on the agenda.
Yeah, we're gonna try. Right?
Please.
Yeah, I saw, yeah.
Okay, so again, it's either see myself or Courtney, if you want any additional items added to, and I would say, see Courtney. Thank you. Move on to agenda item 16, appointments to boards. Um, I know the sustainability is a big board, I know you're glaring at, but I think when we started this, we really didn't know what this was going to be, and I know you told me, well, there's a lot of great people always, I understand that, but I think situations arise when, we got people who can really help be on that board and stuff, and I really include that on this, um, just my opinion on it, um, so.
Is it seven to two, is that what we have, uh, seven permanent, two alternates?
Can I ask you this, on the seven, how many times are we using the two alternates? Does anybody know that?
Very few people miss. Um, I mean, I, I, I really try not to get boards greater than nine.
I understand.
The, the meetings last too long, the board members shift so much, they're not a cohesive board, and I understand that they're good people, but they're residents, and they're not gonna go anywhere, and they're welcome to come to the meetings and participate until there's a board opening. If we get, you will interview great people all the time, and if you keep expanding the board every time you find another great person, you're gonna have a board that's immanitable. I mean, that's just my advice, so that's, so I would think about that before we go down the path of expanding that board.
Just, I wanna throw it out there, 'cause it's a great board, and, uh, there's a lot of cool things, and maybe there's different, and I'm not trying to add more work to anybody, you know, maybe this sustainability is this big group here, and we need to break it into smaller ones that maybe-
You could establish subcommittees or anything like that.
But what I was thinking is, you have maybe a subcommittee that is based on more building, and how we take the buildings there and apply it, and then you have the other part, let me just say sustainability, the mangrove houses, all that stuff, which is, could be different than the building aspect of it. So I'm just, you know, I've seen where this has grown to.
He's, he's looking at the different components of sustainability, and it's good to look at them. I mean, you know, we gotta try and figure it out, because as we move forward, I think you're, you're kinda moving in a direction that we probably are gonna need to be looking at in the future. I just don't know how and when we go about doing it, but there are so many different components, and we have people that have expertise in different things that, you know, is their forte, so if we can-
Well, we have the climate lab, the climate ambassadors going on right now, that we're working on, the code changes and things like that for climate resiliency, I mean, that, if, if they're interested in that, we can, we can bring them into that, um, but the, you know, and there's a lot of opportunities, but we have to be careful in expanding it so much that so many people are doing things that staff can't keep up with them, because that's, you know, there's only so much that we can do, and we're, right now, we're pretty busy.
I know.
I could use three or four NICS.
I'm saying, and I'm not trying to add, I just look at a different component of it. I look at NIC, and then I look at John's, some of the building end of it.
Well, that's what we got Rochelle for.
Yeah, we got this building going on, and those type of ideas, so, I understand, I just-
And we're always open to comments from the board, I mean, if the board itself sees that there's different things they can do a different way, I think we would entertain, you know, any recommendations that they may come up with, so, I don't know.
Yeah, if there's interest, we'll contact those applicants and see if there's interest in them, if getting involved with the climate ambassadors, if they're interested in the building.
I think, yeah, I think an important thing here, and I think what you're trying to get at is that, I think it's important because there's so many people that may have so much good information to offer the board, that, that we know that there's an opportunity for them to speak and present their ideas that are not people sitting on the board. In other words, you know, like we, or citizens' comments, where people can come in and say their ideas and stuff like that, I think we just need to make sure that that opportunity is happening at that board, because obviously, everybody can't be on the board, so they can't be the only people to speak. You gotta have a way for all these other citizens with great ideas, with great backgrounds, to have an opportunity to present-
Right.
-more, more than anything else, and I think that would kinda keep everybody's interest in it, and give those the opportunity to make a difference, make a suggestion that's in there, as opposed to having a board meeting that the only people that are talking are the board members.
Right.
Again, just-
Well, I'll make a, a motion to appoint Amy Baldow to the Sustainability Board as an alternate member with a term ending 9/620, and Christopher Reed to the Sustainability Board as an alternate member with a term ending the same, and to appoint Nancy Woodman to the Beautification Board as a primary member with a term ending on 5/7/19.
Second. They got a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Further discussion?
Oh, vacancies open up all the time too on the board, so it's, you know, never know.
Yeah, mine was just a different type of sustainability.
I would, I would have the same vote with you, but-
So, that's fine.
Courtney makes sense, makes sense.
Okay, I understand. Okay, further discussion? Here and none, one more.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 17, um, adoption of the minutes, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the ethics training meeting of August 1st, and the council meeting of August 2nd, as admitted.
Second.
I have a motion of Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Any further discussion? Here and none, one more.
Councilman McGibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, um, thank you, now, don't go anywhere. Um, at this time, no further business for council-
The council.
On city council, I'm adjourning this city council meeting, and I'm starting another one. At this time, I like to call the order, the city council emergency meeting, September 6th, 6th, 2017, approximately 8:15, um, just to take action on the status of Hurricane Irma and declaring a local state of emergency in the city of Satellite Beach. Thank you, Chief.
Well, if you watch TV enough, you know there's something heading our way. Um, just last update at 5:00 PM, Irma was 50 miles off the coast of Puerto Rico at 185 mile an hour winds, and it has stayed on its consistent track, and that has been predicted by the hurricane center, and it's been very consistent. Um, based off of where we're at right now, it looks like that we're gonna see this landfall maybe around Miami area, skirt the coast up, and probably exit out somewheres around Titusville to Daytona Beach. Unfortunately, that's not the track we want, because that puts the I-Wall definitely on top of us. Not trying to be a doomsday person here, but I think we are gonna be looking at probably a good 120 mile an hour winds on its current projected path. The wind field for hurricane winds extend out just 60 miles from the core, and that's pretty consistent with a strong hurricane, and so it's almost kinda like Matthew, if it wobbles a little bit, so if it moves 60 miles to the west towards Orlando, we might get the outer skirts of it, if it's same thing out, out in the water, we'll have the same thing, but the tropical storm winds reach out 300 miles all the way around, so we are not gonna miss these tropical storm winds by any main, by any measure. Just a quick update, we've, uh, started the process today of getting prepared for the storm. Matthew, we could call it today, let's call it a scrimmage game, um, we went through that process, which is really good, 'cause we really hadn't had a hurricane in 10 years, you know, so it allowed us to exercise quite a few things, take some lessons learned and apply that for this meeting, uh, for the, for the storm. Uh, so at the end of the day, we're all on track, um, there's a couple other things that are going to happen that, uh, will work, work before we announce it, but we're working on something with the deal with the water issue, and we have when Melbourne isolates the system. Uh, other than that, I think we're in a good shape, um, pre-storm and during the storm, it's our resources, and that, that goes relatively smoothly. On this particular storm, our work is not in those two phases, our work is gonna be in the recovery phase, and this is going to be requiring a lot of resources, and those resources have been already identified, and we are pre-ready to plug them in and request them if we need, and we have to go through the county emergency management to do that, but, uh, we're got some lessons learned, and it looks like we're gonna have a pretty tough time on the recovery side.
Um, council, I just wanted to update you on some of the, um, the specifics that we've started with. Sandbags will start tomorrow morning at 8:00, um, so we have that, we've switched the location over to, um, the sports park this year, um, we have the bags already.
We have 4,000, and we have an account, we're supposed to be getting another 5,000 delivered, and we're supposed to have 3,000 today to wait to check.
Yeah. So we, um, so we'll be prepared for that. We are closing, um, uh, we, tomorrow will be a skeleton crew at city hall, and all non-essential personnel will be sent home. Friday will be completely closed. Thursday and, um, Fri-, or Thursday afternoon or Friday, we'll announce when, um, essentials are due to work for the, the storm. Um, we have, again, to let you know, we, we did fly a drone over to check, to get footage of all of the city facilities, as well as the, uh, the beach. Um, we did start payroll early, so our employees won't have to wait if they can't get, if, if we have so much damage, and we won't be able to pay them on Thursday, so they will be paid tomorrow afternoon. 6:30 tonight, Brevard County EOC is, or Emergency Management is meeting with the policy committee to discuss the, um, evacuation plans, and at 8:00, uh, we will be, I believe Suzanne is in that conference call right now to determine whether or not there's an evacuation, and that might even be announced by tomorrow.
I, I think plans will be announced by tomorrow, yeah.
Um, we are not only asking for the declaration of emergency, but we are asking for your approval of up to $100,000 for debris cleanup, so we don't have to come back to you at a special meeting, um, after the storm, um, so we would like that approval as well, and I think that's it. Do you have anything else?
Let's just talk about timing real quick. Um, as it stands right now, sometime between Sunday evening and Monday morning would be the peak, as the current projected time is.
Okay.
Can't they come down? I know.
Well, I know.
It's so you can't see anything, and you're scared to death.
Right, and it's so dark, if it was daytime, it'd be worse.
Yeah.
Chief, thank you. Any other question? Um, at this time, um, opening up for ordinance number 647, Jim? You have it? Here you go.
Okay.
Ordinance number 647, 647.
Can I interject? That's a reference that's already been adopted, and that would be Pearson's information to present. The curfew?
We, we don't need to-
We're not a style.
It says right here-
It's already been established.
Okay. It says right here.
So this is, this is the curfew stuff?
All right. Chief, sorry, I, it was handed to me, I thought, and it was put on a note to read.
Uh, uh, no, sir, no, no problem at all, yeah, this, this, uh, ordinance 647 was established in 1996, um, in January 1996, and this covers juveniles, um, and that's all fine and set, and there's no need to, to do anything with that. Um, in the meeting with all the chiefs and the sheriff, we're, we're gonna try as hard as we possibly can to avoid doing a curfew, um, it, it really doesn't really do what it's intended to do, so it's really not something that we're gonna try to do unless we just absolutely have to, and if that's the case, the county will do that, and what we would do, like we did last year, actually, uh, I believe, is come back and just have you adopt whatever the county does, if we feel like we need to do that for our city. So at this point, we don't need to do anything, we'll just have to see what things happen and how things go, but, uh, the, the consensus was, uh, you know, having a curfew in place isn't gonna keep bad people from going out and stealing something, and good people aren't gonna do it anyway, so it really, didn't really do much of anything, so we're gonna try to avoid, you know, having to put this out and get people, you know, all excited about government saying, hey, you know, you gotta stay in your house.
Thank you. Questions for chief?
So you need a motion to approve-
Just one thing on this, any do public comment?
It doesn't hurt.
Um, any public comment on this matter? Blair?
Just real quick, I'm not sure which part of this, I'm having a little trouble hearing. As far as the emergency plans, have you been coordinating with Melbourne in terms of turning off utilities, and, so is water gonna be turned off, is power good? So can you just touch on that?
Sure. So, um, I would be shocked if they did not isolate the system for the storm, so, um, what, the reason why they do that, what, all they do is, is separate the barrier islands from the mainland, basically, and they do that because if a break happens on one side or the other, it could affect the entire water supply for the whole, all of the customers. Um, we still have water, we have water in the water tower, um, and that's the source of water that we use, the problem is, um, is not really for residential use, the problem comes in when we try to, to fight fires, um, and the fire chief is working on, on an alternative for that, um, if that happens, so, um, that, that probably will happen, um, we just don't know what the timing of that is yet. Um, the electric will not be turned off. Um, a lot of the improvements, however, from the FPL, um, a lot of their transformers now have sensors, so that if a transformer falls, that it will trigger, uh, basically an outage for that, that area. Um, that unfortunately didn't happen last time, so we, we made sure that they understood that, um, but they do not turn off the electricity during the storm. We asked that question, we got a big resounding no.
Okay, thank you. Or still open, public comment first, no problem. Um, floor's still open for any further public comment? Here and none, back to council.
Um, has Melbourne started working on the automated valves that Mike McNeese was talking about, so that this-
It would, I don't think it's done for the storm.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, can I get a motion for $100,000 for, up to $100,000 for debris pickup? Have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion? Chairman, one more.
Councilman McGibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Courtney, anything else we need to discuss in this meeting? Chiefs, anything else? Allen, anything?
No. I'm sorry, Courtney.
Great.
Excuse me, in the past, we've always declared it as a local emergency, so we'll need to make another motion on that as well.
I'll make a motion that the city of Satellite Beach declare a local emergency based on Hurricane Irma.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor. One more.
Councilman McGibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Okay, thank you, everybody, good luck to everybody, please be safe, thank you. We need to move on. Because I'm gonna wait to see where it goes.